I can call it.
Ready? Officially calling Monday, September the 13th, four thirty PM Central Time, meeting to order. And I'm going to ask Ms. Carrillo for official form, please.
Mayor Armando Tagna.
Present ma'am.
Mayor Pro Tem Jessica Ortega.
Present.
Councilman Ruben Plata.
Present.
Councilwoman Nori Garza.
Here.
Councilman Alberto Vela.
Here.
Mayor, we have established forum.
Thank you ma'am. Call for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. I'm going to ask Mr. Perez to take the lead on this item. Mr. Perez, you have the floor.
Yes, good afternoon. If I can have everyone, please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your grace and goodness. We pray you give us greater knowledge and understanding to give back what is good and excellent to our community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we serve, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Call for presentations. I'm going to call for the first item on the agenda. Ms. Enrique, you have the podium.
Mayor, City Council, good evening. So, great update. We are officially sold out for this Thursday's Buenas tardes luncheon. We're really excited. So, we have, we're expecting about over two hundred people. So, we expect our council and mayor to be there to join us as well. Tomorrow, we have ribbon cutting at five PM for keto sweets and treats. And they, one of the things that they do is they, it's like a specific diet or keto, for keto sweets. So, we're really excited about it and they're off of Griffin. So, we invite everyone to join us as well. We also have an educational workshop tomorrow at two PM. And it's with our partners over at the SBDC. And it is focusing on the entrepreneur equation. Next Tuesday, we do have a couple of educational workshops as well. The one on Tuesday is in Spanish and this one is at two o'clock. And it's on poder de mercadoun tecnia, visión y presupuesto. And then on Wednesday, we have it on basic legal tips for startups. And that is all we have for, for this evening.
Any questions by the council?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Enriquez. Call for item number two and just the departmental reports. Mr. Perez is here to answer any questions and if so want. And feels like it, he can call any department heads to that, to continue the answering process for any of the council members. We have a motion on the floor for to approve the departmental reports as presented in writing. We have a second. Any final discussion by any of the council members or any final report that you want to hear? Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries and I'll call for item number three. Ms. Carrillo, do we have anybody participation, citizen participation?
Mayor, item number three, we have a presentation by Mr. David Hernandez. And he's here representing Valley Offroad Bicycle Association.
Ma'am, that's.
I have item number four. It's that I'm calling for item number.
Oh, you'd like to do item number four first?
No. Citizens' participation.
Citizens' participation, that's item four.
What you mentioned, that's item four.
I haven't decided four on the, on my agenda. Clarification that's for.
On mine, ma'am, I have the presentation by David Hernandez, number three. But number four is citizens.
Okay, the bullet point is different than the, than.
Well, the chair recognizes the citizen presentation first, or participation first. Let's go with the citizen participation, since that's the same agenda item that I have. And for legal purposes, the chair recognizes item number three. And Ms. Carrillo, do we have anybody on citizens' participation?
Yes, Mayor Council, but first, if I may, persons addressing the council. Any person who willfully utters loud, threatening, or abusive language, or engages in any disorderly conduct, which would impede, disrupt, or disturb the orderly conduct of any meeting, hearing, or other proceeding, shall be called to order by the presiding officer. And if such conduct continues, may at the discretion of the council, be ordered barred from further audience before the council during that meeting. No one shall, in their utterance or actions, be disrespectful to anyone else, public speaker, city staff, or city council. Everyone shall act with polite decorum. We do have a couple of citizens that signed up for citizens' participation. The first one, Mayor, being Mr. Aaron Alvarado.
Mr. Aaron Alvarado, you, sir, you recognized by the chair, you have three minutes, name and address for the record. And please approach the podium and let us know about what you want to say, sir.
My name is, thank you, Mayor, for having us today. My name's Aaron Alvarado, twenty-nine, twelve Pelican in McAllen, Texas. And the reason for my visit, do I give this to Ms. Carrillo? I brought a folder for everybody.
Thank you, sir.
I am the Sherland Pioneer Trap and Ski Coach slash sponsor. And I brought a little presentation. I got three minutes just to this, let you guys know. A lot of people don't know that, that the high schools have trap and ski. So, I put together a program last year. We went to Waco and competed at the state tournament. At that tournament, Sherland Pioneer placed third. And the reason for the visit today is to thank you guys for your continued support within the shooting sports. I know both Sherri and Pioneer, we use your guys' field here in Mission, because that's the only place available. Now, a lot of people don't know that, hey, the high schools have shooting sports. And you have both Sherri teams compete in the shooting sports. And we just wanted to just let you guys know, hey, thank you for having that facility available. We wish we had more with forty kids out there. It's really tight logistically, like, because of the field. It's small, but that's the only place in the valley. So, we just wanted to say thank you guys for your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Congratulations on, on your results, sir. Carrillo, number two?
Yes, ma'am, we have Mr. Ivan Garcia, and he'd like to speak to our, on item number thirty-seven on the agenda.
Mr. Garcia, you're present here. You have the podium, sir. Item number thirty-seven, council, so you can look at it. We are not going to address the item right now, but we will let you speak. And we'll take into consideration everything that you say when we come to item number thirty-seven. You have three minutes, sir. Identify yourself and your name, address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ivan Garcia with Rio Delta Engineering, on behalf of the developer. On number thirty-seven, we have Lantana subdivision of for consideration for approval. And the specific item I want to address, it's, we have a variance request for the lot size on this particular subdivision. I have a little, I guess, packet to pass around. Just, just very briefly, the reason why we are requesting these variants is because the geometry of our property is irregular and not within the standards we mentioned. So, basically, we are, we have lots that are an average size of fifty-four by one-twenty-five, which exceeds the minimum square footage of six thousand square feet for the lots. It is that the geometry of the subdivision does not allow real well to, to accommodate very efficient, efficiently the infrastructure and all that. And I just wanted to emphasize that we do understand the reason why the ordinance is written like that for minimum lot frontage and all that. But one of the things that, that we want to make sure is to emphasize that the developer is trying to provide a high-end single-family residential development, of course, in a prime location, that will exceed the typical residential standards. And of course, improve the quality of the life of all the residents in the area. As you can tell, this would be a high-end, single-family development with restrictions, two-car garage, enclosed, two-car driveway, and all the amenities that you typically see on a higher-end development. So, the, again, the geometry of the property does not allow very efficiency to distribute that. So, that is why we are, are making this request. And I don't know how many minutes I'm here to entertain any questions the council might have when the item comes up, in case you have any, any questions.
Yes, sir. Well, we get to the item and we do have questions, we'll let, we'll give you authorization to come speak to the questions, if there's question.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
The third person that's on the.
No, I don't have anyone outside, no.
I saw somebody that approached, sir, did, did you want to address the citizens' participation, sir, or?
That was the next item there on the, on the bike.
Okay, so then, okay, I understand. Okay, I'll close, I'll close the item number three, if, if we don't have anybody else in electronic. Do we have anybody in electronics, Charlie or Alex? I'll close the citizens' participation at this time for item three and call for item four. Mr. David Hernandez, you have, please identify yourself, name and address, and you have the podium.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Mission City Council. My name is David Hernandez. I am the president and founder of the Valley Offroad Bicycling Association, PO Box one-eight-eight, Tempe, Texas, seventy-five-eight-six. I do have a handout that I'd like to share with the council. So, I'm here to talk about Mission Hike and Bike Trails, located here in Mission, Texas, as you all well know, accessed by the community across the Rogan Valley, which are currently at risk of losing land and single-track trail to the Mission Trap and Ski Club, as approved through an agreement on August ninth, twenty-twenty-one, with the city of Mission. Approximately two and a quarter acres of land have been given to the gun club as part of their expansion, which has destroyed a section of Mission Trails called Psychopath. Mission Trails are part of the original trails established back in nineteen ninety-eight by various mountain bike clubs and volunteers. Many hours of hard work by community members have built and shaped Mission Trails as they exist today. The current construction has plowed two parts of the trail, preventing access to the section by mountain bikers, hikers, and trail runners. The destruction of the section of the trail prevents access to the north side of Mission Trails toward the canal. You can see that on the map in the handout I provided. We respectfully request the following: no further destruction or modification of the existing trails at Mission Trails, hike and bike, to reroute the current psychopath section at Mission Trails to reconnect the existing Mission Trails and re-establish an original trail flow. And we'd like to work and partner with the city of Mission, with our organization, which is a five-oh-one C-three nonprofit, volunteers, as its trail stewards, and to maintain the existing trail. We have a core of volunteers that go out and help maintain and trim and cut the trails. The limited availability of green space in the McAllen Mission area and sparse outdoor recreational locations for wellness make any loss of trail a cause of concern for the community. And the utilization of these trails at a greater number than privately-owned clubs with limited access to members only. The Rogan Valley has the highest rate of obesity and diabetes in Texas, in the U.S., with eighty percent of our population considered obese and one in three persons diagnosed diabetic. Mission Trails are just one of a few green spaces that the community can visit for physical activity. This green space also promotes mental wellness, serving a vital function in our community during the global pandemic that has created a greater need for such spaces. Giving away land piece by piece to the Mission Trap and Ski Club takes away vital trail and brings shooting ranges dangerously close to riders, hikers, and runners. Please do not create an accident weighted to happen that could result in injury or worse death. The Valley Offroad Bicycling Association, Borba, its membership, the greater mountain biking community, trail running community, and concerned citizens of the valley respectfully request there be no further destruction of Mission Trails and to continue to allow access for the betterment and health of our community.
That's three minutes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This is not an actual item, but I would like to just set a little guidance for, for the staff. If you could research on, on this request, come back to the council. If, if you feel that is necessary to come back to the council, because the first question that came into my, mine is, where it says psychopath, you know, who owns the property, you know, created it. And his, if his statement is saying that we did it in a local agreement, I would like to see the owner, in a local agreement, to see what, because I know, I know that the proposed projects that we have are very, very critical to our, to our development in, in the city of Mission also, you know. So, just give you that, that kind of guidance and then come back to, to us, to us at a later place, at a later time, because this is not an agenda item, so we, we have to move forward. Unless any other council member has a question. Well, he, he's the one that mentioned it in his presentation, that, that we entered into, the city entered into a, in a local agreement with them. I, I, you know, I've been on the council, not only, not as a mayor, but on the council, I don't remember entering into. But, you know, this, I don't know, I want to, I want to.
If I may, sir, I believe he was referring to us, in a local agreement with us and the ski club.
Oh, well, you, if he was making a reference that, then disregard my.
Am I correct, Mr. Hernandez?
I, I.
I meant in the local between our organization.
That's what I thought.
But are you saying there's one in place?
There's not one in place.
That's the question that.
Well, you answered my question, so staff don't have to answer my question. We don't have any in a local in play.
Mayor, can I ask Mr. Hernandez a question?
If legal allows us to be able to.
If you recognize him enough, yes.
Yes, we recognize him.
I would like to ask, who in staff have you spoken to or have been speaking to since your inception of your organization?
We've spoken with Brad Benson from Parks and Recreation. He's been our main contact with, representing the city. But our organization, we work with City of Harlingen, City of Brownsville, in supporting and organizing the trails. So, our volunteer squad and help trim and maintain, of course, to continue to gain access to mountain biking.
Well, I think that maybe in the future, we may possibly have a workshop, because I know that both, I mean, if you heard Mr. Alvarado just spoke about his, you know, great class that participates in the shooting. So, both sports are biking and, and the city of Mission is fortunate to have both of you all. So, I'm sure that we can come to an agreement and, and help both entities. But thank you for speaking to us today.
Okay, thank you for having us. Yes, we have some of our membership here represented.
Thank you for taking your time to clean out there. I know sometimes it does get pretty.
I just, sorry.
Trees, so.
Thank you. Okay, no other questions. I'll call for public hearings and item number five, Ms., Mr. Perez, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, ma'am, the item number five is the public hearing on the twenty-twenty-one proposed tax rate. The notice, twenty-twenty-one tax rate proposed, property tax rate of the city of Mission was published in the Progress Times on Friday, September the third, twenty-twenty-one. The proposed twenty-twenty-one tax rate is zero-point-five-two-nine-nine per hundred valuation. The public hearing is to give the opportunities for citizens to speak on the proposed tax rate. That is the, the current tax rate that we're currently at.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the public hearing on the twenty-twenty-one proposed property tax rate? If you, if you want to, please approach the podium at this time, please. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, therefore, I'm going to, I'm going to ask for, move it over to electronics. Is there anybody in electronics that's going to give us a? No, okay, in, in this case, I will call, close public hearing. And there's no necessary action on item number five. Am I correct, Mr. Martinez?
That's correct.
So, we're closing the public hearing and, and continue moving forward with the budget process. You know, call for planning and zoning recommendation, item number six. Ms. Luna, you have a floor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item number six is a rezoning for a seventeen-point-ninety-five acre tract of land, more or less, out of lot eleven dash one, West addition to Sherland. This is from agricultural AOI two-P public. The applicant is Union Design Developers LP in care of Serenity Cemetery. The council is inclined to approve this, this item and an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. This property is located approximately one-point-two miles north of Military Parkway, along the east side of Inspiration Road. Surrounding zones include, to the north, PUD R-one, which is single-family residential, to the east, agricultural, to the west, plan unit development, and to the south is outside city limits. The future land use map shows this area as low density. The proposed zone complies with the future land use map and surrounding land uses. P&amp;Z and staff recommended approval. There's a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning, if you're in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, therefore, I'm going to move over to electronics. And as Charlie and Alex said, we have anybody on this item. I will close this public hearing and ask for guidance on the, from the, from the council.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve item number six. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries for the record, it be ordinance fifty-seventy, fifty-seventy. And I'm calling for item number seven. Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number seven is a rezoning for Olive Lot Ten, Block one-oh-six, original townsite subdivision. This is from R-one, single-family residential to C-three, general business. The applicant is Liseth Sessity. This is a, a public hearing. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located near the northwest corner of Dorothy Avenue in the On Apple Street, along the west side of Dorothy. Surrounding zones include R-one to the northeast and south, and commercial C-three to the west. The proposed site currently has the United Restaurant Supply Warehouse. The future land shows this area as general commercial. The proposed zone complies with the city's future land use map and surrounding land uses. Staff is recommending approval. This property was rezoned during the mass rezoning in twenty-six, in two thousand and six. It used to be commercial and it was reverted to R-one. So, we're trying to bring it back to its current zone, which is general commercial. There's a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning, please approach the podium at this time, from the audience. I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm going to move over to electronics. And I'm going to ask Charlie or Alex indicate to me if there's anybody from the public. Thank you. I'm going to close this public hearing and ask for direction from the council. We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five-oh and the ordinance fifty-seventy-one, fifty-seventy-one. And I'm calling for item number eight.
Mayor, before we move from that picture, can you put that screen? Yeah, the, the lot to the north of there, is that the condition that that lot is in? Or is it in a picture?
That, that is actually currently under, it has a court case, so they are going to clean it up.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Item number eight, you have the problem.
Item number eight is a rezoning for all of lots eleven, twelve, and thirteen of Ala Blanca subdivision. This is currently R-one, single-family residential to C-three, general business. The applicant is Liseth Sessity. This is a public hearing item. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located three-hundred-and-five feet north of East Paloma Street and West Express eighty-three, along the south side of West Express eighty-three. Surrounding zones include commercial to the north and west, residential to the east and south. The future land use map shows this area as general commercial. The proposed zone complies with the future land use map and surrounding land uses. P&amp;Z and staff recommended approval. There's a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning, please approach the podium at this time. I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm going to move it over to electronics and Charlie and Alex. We have nobody. I'm going to close this public hearing and ask guidance from the city council. We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries and this is ordinance fifty-seventy-two, fifty-seventy-two, and asking for item number nine. Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number nine is a rezoning for a ten-acre tract of land out of lot thirty-dash-ten, West addition to Sherland. This is from agricultural to R-one-eight, which is large lot, single-family. The applicant is R.A.M.R.G.B. Inc. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located half a mile north of East Mall Two Road on, on North Brian Road, along the west side of Brian. Surrounding zones include agricultural to the northeast and west and south. Existing land uses include residential to the northeast and south. The site is currently vacant. The future land use map shows this area as low density. The proposed zone complies with the future land use map and surrounding land uses. P&amp;Z and staff recommended approval. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? Please, if you're from the audience at this time, please approach the podium. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm going to move it to electronics and. We have nobody. Alex, nobody. I'm going to close this public hearing and ask for the guidance of the council. We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five-oh and it's ordinance fifty-seventy-three, and calling for item number ten. Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number ten is a conditional use permit renewal for the selling onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages. This is for Renese of Sherland. This is located twenty-six-hundred East Griffin Parkway. This is a one-point-zero-four acre tract of land out of the west, one-hundred feet of the north, four-hundred-and-fifty-six feet out of lot two-forty-six, Johnny and Sherry subdivision. The site is currently known commercial and the applicant is Renese B. Strokes LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The eighty-five-oh-six foot establishment is located between Hackberry Avenue and Taylor Road, along the south side of Griffin Parkway. Renese of Sherland has been in operation at this location since two, since twenty-twenty, um, two thousand. In addition to the restaurant, the site has a coffee shop, a boutique, a nail and hair salon, and a spa. D.C.U.P. was last approved on March twenty-eighteen. The C U P was last approved on March twenty eighteen, twenty-eight, twenty eighteen, for a period of two years. The applicant would like to renew his C U P. The hours of operation are Monday and Sunday from eight A M to three P M, Tuesday to Thursday from eight A M to three P M, and six to nine thirty. And on Friday and Saturday from eight A M to three P M, and then from six to eleven. P N Z and staff has recommended approval for a period of two years, at which time the C U P, he will need to renew the C U P and T A B C license. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit renewal? If you're from the audience, please approach us to the podium at this time. I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm gonna ask for electronics. No, I will close this public hearing and ask for guidance from the city council. We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second? We have a second, and all those in favor say aye. All those oppose, same sign. Item number ten is approved five oh and it's ordinance fifty seventy-four for the record. And calling for item number eleven, Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number eleven is a conditional use permit renewal for the selling onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages. This is for Arellis Event Center at eighteen oh nine West Griffin Parkway. This is lots nine through eleven, Southern Oaks Phase One subdivision. The property is currently zoned C three, general business, and the applicant is Stacy A Vella. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located five hundred feet west of Inspiration Road, along the south side of Griffin Parkway. This is the second of two event centers that the applicant operates at this commercial plaza. The banquet party hall is used for such activities such as weddings, reunions, birthday parties. The C U P was last approved on May thirteen, twenty nineteen, up until January twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, at which time the applicant needed to renew his T A B C license. He already complied with that. The applicant would like to renew his conditional use permit. The hours of operation for the business will be Friday and Saturday from six to twelve A M and Saturdays from six to one. He is complying with all of the requirements, staff is recommending approval for a period of two years to reevaluate, at which time he will need to renew his C U P and T A B C license and waiver of the three hundred foot separation requirement from neighborhood, residential neighborhoods. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit renewal? If you're in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm gonna go to electronics. We have nobody in electronics, therefore, I'm gonna close this public hearing and ask for guidance from the city council. We have a motion on the floor to approve the renewal, do I hear a second? We have a second, and this is open for any discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those oppose, same sign. Motion carries and ordinance fifty seventy-five is approved. Calling for item number twelve, Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number twelve is a conditional use permit renewal for the selling onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages. This is for Arellis Celebration Hall. This is at nineteen oh five West Griffin Parkway. This would be lots one through four, Solid Oaks Phase One subdivision. The property is currently zoned commercial and the applicant is Stacy A Vella. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located five hundred feet west of Inspiration Road, along the south side of Griffin Parkway. The building is currently being used as a banquet party hall such, for such activities such as wedding, reunions, birthday party, seminar. This business has been in operation since June eleven, twenty fourteen. The C U P was last approved on May thirteen, twenty nineteen, for a period of two years. The applicant has been in operation for the past seven years without any complaints or incidents. He would like to renew his C U P. The hours of operation would be Friday through Sunday from six A M to twelve A M and Saturday from six to one. Staff is recommending approval, subject to waiver of the three hundred foot separation requirement to residential neighborhoods. C U P to be valid for a period of two years, at which time the applicant would have to renew his T A B C license and C U P. There's a public hearing, this item is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? If you're in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm gonna move to electronics. We have nobody, so I'm gonna close this public hearing and move over to the guidance of the city council. We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second? We have a second, all those in favor say aye. All those oppose, same sign. Motion carries, ordinance fifty seventy-six is approved five oh, and I'm calling for item number thirteen, Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number thirteen is a conditional use permit renewal to keep a portable building. This is for the auto sales office use at twenty-one eighteen West Mile three road. This is the south three point eighty-six acres of lot twenty-two, New Caledonia subdivision. The property is currently zoned C three, general business, and the applicant is Elia Zapchavego. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located near the northeast corner of Morphew Road and West Mall three road. The almost four acre commercial property was annexed by the city in twenty fourteen. This property has operated an auto mechanic shop and used car lot since the early nineties. The applicant has a twenty-four by sixteen portable building on block pierce that is being used as an office for the sale of autos. The hours of operation would be Monday to Friday from eight to six, and Saturday from ten A M to two P M. He currently has four parking spaces which needing quote. Staff is recommending approval for a period of one year to, to continue to assess this new operation. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit renewal? If you're in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm gonna ask for electronics. Nobody from electronics, I'm gonna close this public hearing and ask for the guidance from the council. Yes, sir, you have the floor.
This is the second renewal, this is the second time he's been.
Was last time one year renewal as well?
Yes. Well, no, no, two years, he's been in business three years, but one, most of the last year he was closed, so that's why we're doing it for one more year.
But that business has been there for years prior to the annexation?
Other businesses, this is a new applicant.
Oh, I see, okay, sorry.
Any other question?
I move for approval.
We have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second? We have a second, all those in favor say aye. All those oppose, same sign. Motion carries five oh for ordinance fifty seventy-seven, and I'm calling for item number fourteen, Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number fourteen is the approval of ordinance amending the City of Mission Code of Ordinance is Chapter eighteen, Building and Building Regulations, Article two, Building Code, Section eighteen dash one eighty-five fees, and adding to Chapter ninety-eight subdivisions, Article six, fees and charges, Section ninety-eight, two seven two, lab testing fees. This is the ordinance that was discussed during our workshop to amend several of our planning fees and inspections. The fees that we were proposing to, to change are the plumbing, gas permit fees, the swimming pool permit, solar panel, and commercial remodeling permit from this currently, those, this were the items that were discussed for inspections. For planning, it would be the subdivision processing fee and the lab testing fees. The subdivisions currently are two fifty and three hundred, depending on if it's five acres, if it's more than five acres, it's three hundred. The proposed changes would be four hundred for five, five acre plot or less, and five hundred for five acres or more. Lab testing currently is three percent, we're proposing five percent. For the inspections for solar panel and swimming pool panel, it was currently by the value of the construction, we are setting it a set fee of thirty dollars, I mean, I'm sorry, three hundred dollars. As a set fee for swimming pool and commer, and solar panels for commercial remodeling, we would like to have the flexibility, depending on the construction, to charge either by square footage or by cost of construction. And for plumbing and gas permit, it will just be from thirty-five to fifty as a base permit fee. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the ordinance fifty seventy-eight? Please come up to the podium and address it at this time, from the audience first, and then electronics second. I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm gonna move over to electronics. Nobody, nobody, I'm gonna move, I'm gonna close this public hearing and, and ask for the council's guidance.
Mayor, I'm just, you need to probably correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm kinda remembering that the inspection fee, we're gonna leave it as is, at two percent?
Yes, that is not changing, it's only the lab testing.
Here it says proposed three percent.
No, that we're not touching, it's just lab testing.
Okay.
That's the only one that's changing.
So, it's.
You wanna announce it on the, on the podium so we, we can make sure for the record that when it gets published, Mr. Martinez, that the correction is done.
Yes, the only fee that will be changing as part of the subdivision would be the lab testing fee, it currently is three percent, we're proposing five percent.
Let's focus on the item that Ms. Garcia mentioned, please, and, and let's just let the public know that, that there is no change in that.
There is no, there is gonna be no change on the inspection fee.
Thank you.
But we are in a personal, this one.
Only the ones I mentioned, the rest will remain the same. Yes, it would be the plumbing, plumbing and gas would be a base fee of fifty dollars. Swimming pool and solar panels would be a set fee of three hundred dollars. For commercial remodeling, depending on the construction, it could be based on square footage or cost of construction, depending on the type of work they're doing. Subdivision fees will be four hundred dollars if it's five acres or less, five hundred if it's five, more than five acres. Lab testing fees will be five percent. Those are the only fees that will be changed.
And those, just to be clear, with lab testing, if there's a balance, that it would be refunded to the, to the developer?
If there is an outstanding, if they ask for more than what we should, the money will be refunded back.
And our fees are pretty much competitive to other municipalities, right?
Yes.
Now, I apologize, I'm in another tender workshop, so this one.
Yes, they are, we compared it to other cities and we're following the same processes they have.
Any other question? The chair is ready to entertain the motion.
I move for approval.
We have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second? We have a second, all those in favor say aye. All those oppose, same sign. Motion carries and ordinance fifty seventy-eight is approved five oh, and we're, I'm calling for item number fifteen.
Item number fifteen is the approval of a ordinance amending Appendix A zoning, Article nine, business permits for the City of Mission Code of Ordinance is by adding Section one forty-eight A, short-term rentals, one forty-eight B, registration, and one forty-eight C, compliance penalty and provisions. The direction was given by the council during the June eight, twenty twenty meeting to come back with an ordinance to ban short-term rentals. After further research with other municipalities, we discovered that we cannot ban them, we can only regulate them. So, in order to address this concern that we've been having, staff work on an ordinance that would help us have better control to monitor the areas or homes that are rented. They will have to register with the city and would be able to contact the owner or renter if needed within a, within an hour. Currently, the city is aware of fifteen locations that have been rented and are not registered. So, we are just trying to have a better control to address the concerns that we're having from our citizens. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor against the ordinance fifty seventy-nine? Please approach the podium at this time, if you're in the audience. I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm gonna ask for electronic. And I will close this public hearing and ask guidance from the council.
Yes, anything over or less than thirty?
Prefer approval?
We, hold on, I have a question to finish.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm a little after the council, but I'm personally, I think, sure very good.
The chair will recognize you, Mr. Taffey, you have a question?
No, you answered my question, thank you.
I will recognize the motion at this time, Ms. Otega, so we are here a second. We have a second, any final discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those oppose, same sign. You oppose it, sir? Okay, so, ordinance fifty seventy-nine passes four to one. And I'm calling for item number sixteen.
Item number sixteen is a ordinance amending City of Mission Code of Ordinance Appendix A, zoning, Article thirteen, exceptions and modifications by adding Section one fifty-nine, General, seven contingency protocol establishing process to assess and resolve building setbacks. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. This ordinance was established to help residents who have multiple setback violations, trying to help them to comply as much as possible with city requirements. We have worked on a contingency protocol, whole harmless, which has four tiers. The first one would be a structure that can be easily just moved to comply, they just didn't obtain a permit. And this would help them, will just help them, let them know where can they place the structure and apply for the permit and they'll be in compliance. Tier number two is, is a structure that was there prior to being annexed to the city, except it's just not allowed currently with the current zone that it is. So, this tier would, would target any and all structures that were not meeting or not in compliance based on the zoning, not so much the setback. Tier number three would be structures built within the setback encroaching, but can be reasonably relocated within their lot to meet the required setback. And tier number four are structures that cannot be moved. It would be a financial, it would not be financially feasible to remove the structure. So, in order to, to keep it where it's at, tier number four would allow them to sign a whole harmless, stating that they could keep it as long as it's fire rated, that we're trying to protect. And even the future, it were to be demolished, they would need to comply with the required setbacks. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the ordinance fifty eighty, fifty eighty? Anybody in the audience, if you wanna say for or against, please approach the podium at this time. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm gonna move to electronics. And I will close this public hearing, I'm asking for the guidance from the city council.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second? We have a second, all those in favor say aye. All those oppose, same sign. Motion carries, ordinance fifty eighty is approved and five oh, and I'm gonna call it for item number seventeen, Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number seventeen is a discussion and action to amend Appendix A zoning regulations, Section one point three six one, A O P Permanent Open Space District, to provide the foundation for possible transition into suitable development upon provision of an in-depth engineering drainage analysis. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The purpose of this ordinance is to be able to ask anybody that is applying for rezoning on an agricultural open permanent district to be able to ask for a feasibility study. In this analysis, the factors that will be considered will be areas that are in a flood zone, the outfall location, method of interconnectivity, possible, if it's possible for development, and its repercussions if there was to be any for any new development. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against ordinance fifty eighty-one, fifty eighty-one? If you're in the audience and you want to say anything in favor or against fifty eighty-one, please approach the podium at this time. I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm going to ask for electronics. No, I'm going to close this public hearing and ask for the guidance of the city council.
I move for approval. It's presented there.
We have a motion to approve ordinance fifty eighty-one is presented. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second in this opening for any discussions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries and ordinance fifty eighty-one is approved and move to item number eighteen. Mr. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number eighteen is an ordinance amending City Emission Code of Ordinances Chapter forty-two, Health and Sanitation Article six, Noise Division one by amending section forty-two two thirty-one, forty-two two thirty-two, forty-two two thirty-five, forty-two two thirty-six, forty-two two thirty-eight, forty-two two thirty-nine, and forty-two two forty-two, and adding section forty-two to thirty-one A, forty-two to thirty-one B, forty-two to forty-four through to forty-two to forty-six. The purpose of this amendment is to establish set a decibel reading to be at sixty-five decibels day or night. The other amendment would be for commercial and industrial construction to commence three AM to six PM when they're not abutting a residential structure. However, exemptions may be made, may be considered on residential or estate lots to commence at three AM. These are the factors that are changing within their, we're proposing to change with the noise ordinance. This is a public hearing. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against ordinance fifty eighty-two? If you're in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm going to ask for electronics. No electronics, therefore I'm going to close this public hearing and add for the guidance of the city council.
I move for approval.
We have a motion on the floor to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second. This is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries and item ordinance fifty eighty-two is approved five zero. And I'm calling for item number nineteen. Mr. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number nineteen, a discussion and action to amend section one ten dash four sixty-one required and section one ten four sixty-eight paid standards of chapter ten Traffic and Vehicles Article eight, Division four of Street Parking Regulations, providing for perpetual maintenance of set paid parking improvements with its apprentice and necessary features. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. Apparently, the city does not have an ordinance in place that regulates the maintenance, specifically the maintenance of any commercial apartments, parking lots, lighting. This ordinance would help us establish, establish the concerns that we've had regarding potholes, street lighting. This one would require them to have year-round maintenance on their properties. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against this ordinance fifty eighty-three? Please approach the podium at this time. I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm going to ask for electronics. I don't see any electronics. Thank you, sir. I'm going to close this public hearing and I'm going to ask for the guidance of the city council. We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any final discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries ordinance fifty eighty-three is approved five zero and I'm calling for item number twenty. Chief Dominguez, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item number twenty is discussion and possible action to amend section one ten dash three seventy-five, parking for certain purposes of chapter one ten Traffic and Vehicles, Article eight, Division one of the City Emission Code of Ordinances to hereafter include the prohibition of parking private vehicles in public parking lot spaces for certain purposes prohibiting parking by private vehicles on city-owned property includes but not limited to overnight, non-business hours or weekend parking and the adoption of that ordinance. Obviously, we've had several concerns about unfortunately several residents using our city parking lots for their own private business. And obviously putting their vehicles on these private lots, therefore citizens cannot rely on those parking spaces to shop the downtown areas. Obviously, this protects all park, city parking lots, city buildings, public parks, obviously our downtown area. So we're requesting the approval of this ordinance.
This is a public hearing, chief, so I have to open it up for the public to give us feedback. On anybody in favor or against ordinance fifty eighty-four? If you're in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm moving to electronics. I will close this public hearing and move over to the guidance of the city council.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion of this matter? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries ordinance fifty eighty-four is approved, chief, five zero.
Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you. Now we'll go move over to consent agenda. All consent agenda items are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item to be removed and considered separately. The city council may take various actions, including but not limited to rescheduling an item in its entirety for a future date or time. The city council may elect to go into executive session on any item, whether or not such item is posted as an executive session item at any time during the meeting when authorized by the provision of the Opens Meeting Act. Consent agenda item number twenty-one, consent agenda item number twenty-two, consent agenda item number twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine that includes resolution seventeen forty-one, thirty that includes resolution seventeen forty-two, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four. Counsel, what are your wishes? We have a motion on the floor to consent, to approve all consent agenda items. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second in this open for final discussion or any pullout of any of the items. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh in consent agenda item twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine which includes resolution seventeen forty-one, thirty which includes resolution seventeen forty-two, thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-four were approved five zero. And I move to approval and authorization for item number thirty-five. Mr. Luna, you have the floor.
Chair and Council, item number thirty-five is a preliminary plat approval for Bryan Point subdivision phase two. This is a four point two seven one acre tract of land auto lot eighteen dash eleven West Addition to Sherland. It's currently zone R two duplex fourplex. The developer is Mario Rodriguez and the engineer is Rio Delta Engineering. This property is located six hundred and fifty-five feet east from the intersection of East First Street and Bryan Road along the south side of East First Street. The developer is proposing eleven duplex fourplex residential lots. Water and sewer are within city and they will be complying with city requirements. The city engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. Staff is recommending approval subject to payment of capital sewer recovery fees and provide water district exclusion. This item is now before you.
You said that the drainage was approved, right?
Yes.
Okay. Item number thirty-five, what's the wishes of the council?
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second. We have a second. Mr. Reda, you second. Am I correct? Then I'll open it for discussion. Mr. Plata, you have the floor.
For their camp homes.
No, it's not the same.
It's not the same. On Ryan North of the expressway. You can take care of his issue with the city with the.
With the payment? No, not yet.
Why would we wanna? Sorry to bring it up.
How much did they owe? It's almost twenty-three thousand.
We're not want to prove something like that.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Mr. Mayor Ramirez came by to see us last week. He brought the deeds and also the documents where he is not the owner of the, of the land. He's just the contractor doing the development. So he is not the developer. He's the contractor doing the work.
Who are we going to hold responsible?
Did he issue a check to the city? Am I correct?
Not for the city.
For his property.
Like he's still pending on issues that we got pending with him.
I would personally feel more comfortable if you all do the research before you bring it to us.
I believe I take the motion to take. That'd be okay.
I would prefer that.
I will recognize.
Yeah, I would like to table this item until we clear the research or whatever. Take care of the items that are pending on class.
Do I hear a second?
Didn't we already have a motion?
We have a motion already, but to take, but I need a second.
No.
No, there was a motion from, from Norium Zerella to prove.
Yes, so I need to rescind my motion.
I don't understand.
Yeah, there was.
Yeah, there might have been a motion, but I don't, I didn't recognize, so.
Second.
Huh?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, that's right. Yes, yes, ma'am. Then, and you.
I'm rescinding my motion.
You rescind your motion? Because that opened the discussion and the question. And you rescind it, so I will entertain the motion from Mr. Plata to table this. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. And any final discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries and item number thirty-five is tabled. And item number thirty-six?
Item number thirty-six is a preliminary plat approval for Inspiration Co. subdivision. This is a five acre tract of land auto lot twenty-nine dash one West Addition to Sherland. It's currently zone R two duplex fourplex. The developer is Rosie Bye Dunn. The engineer is RO Engineer and PL CC. This property is located two hundred and eighty feet north from the intersection of West Mall Two Road and North Inspiration Road along the east side of Inspiration. The developer is proposing sixteen duplex fourplex residential lots. They're meeting city water and city sewer requirements. The drainage report has been approved and approved by your city engineer. Staff is recommending approval subject to payment of capital sewer recovery fees, provide water district exclusion and comply with our format findings. This item is now before you.
Was the the plat also approved by the, by the drainage committee?
Yes, all of the subdivisions have already been.
Okay. Counsel, what's your guidance?
I'm going to approve based on the recommendation of Plata and Son and staff.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second and no flipper discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries ordinance fifty eighty-five is approved. Well, this one does not require ordinance, right? So disregard my statement and we'll move for item number thirty-seven.
Item number thirty-seven is a preliminary plat approval for Lantana Landing subdivision. This is a fourteen acre tract of land, same being out of and forming part of portion of lot thirty-one dash the West Addition to Sherland subdivision and twenty acre tract of land auto lots forty-five and forty-six of Bellwoods Company subdivision D. The developer is Fortis Land Company LLC. The engineer is Rio Delta Engineering. This subdivision is located on the west side of Trossboro, a quarter of a mile south of mile three. The applicant is proposing a hundred and sixty-three single-family residential lots. They're meeting city water and sewer. On this one, they are requesting a variance. The variance, they are requesting three variances. One of the variance is to have lots width of sixty, of fifty-four feet instead of fifty, of sixty required and to have three lots under the six thousand square foot and a variance on the lot width of instead of sixty-five to be sixty and to have seven lots under seven thousand square feet. PNZ and staff recommended denial of all with three variances.
I would like to remind the council that this is item number thirty-seven and there were comments that were said and on the citizen's participation on this item, so take them as presented by the citizen that came up on the view, but what are the wishes of the council?
Mayor, I'd like to ask Ms. Eluna a couple of questions.
Go ahead, ma'am. You got the floor.
Have we worked with the engineer and the developer in reference to the reasoning why we have those stipulations?
Yes, it was originally brought to us and actually they were proposing actually smaller lots. They reconfigured to fifty-four feet, but they're still asking for variance on a hundred and thirty-four lots. That's the main reason why we're denying the variances. We would rather them come with a new proposal that would comply with the city requirements as much as possible.
So you're saying that, you're saying that if we approve the variance at fifty-four, their total square footage for each lot is not going to be six thousand or more?
It might. It's just the width of the lots. Normally, they require to be sixty and they are requesting fifty-four feet.
But it still has a six thousand plus.
It does. The lot makes it a little bit narrow for the driveway to have a power. That's why we would rather the sixty to meet the minimum requirement.
Mayor, I have a second.
But the ordinance doesn't say that the frontage has to be fifty-four.
It's actually sixty.
Minimum of sixty.
That is a minimum.
And this is, this is. As long as it was a total of six thousand plus square footage, it was okay.
It needs to meet the sixty, the sixty in width, a hundred in length, and the square footage. It could be, it could exceed it.
One, two, three.
Yes, they would need to comply with all of the requirements.
So there will be.
Is there, my second question, I'm going to go. Is there another subdivision that has been approved in the past with less than this?
There have been, but not as many lots. The most I think we've seen is like three, five at the most, but not a hundred and thirty.
I see some.
Go ahead.
That's my concern. If it's a hundred and three lots that are not meeting the.
Hundred and thirty-four, sorry.
Oh, what's worse? Okay, one thirty-four lots that aren't meeting the requirement. This is an R one subdivision and the reason that it's, it's zone R one is to control the density. And if you're going to have that many lots with less than what's required, then you've just thrown out the density, you know, out the window. You know, out the window.
So we added more density than that.
You're adding more lots.
Yes, we will approve the various land more.
Yeah, so it shouldn't be an R one. It should be it should be something like an R one T or something like that.
Any any other questions?
No, my my motion would be to.
I'm not ready for a motion because I need for the council to.
I mean, it looks like good project. It has the gateway. It's going to be kind of looking at it, but it is a little small, so I want to see if you can work something else.
Well, let me ask the developers. I'm going to the chair. It's going to call the developer up, you know, to ask him. See if you could answer Mr. Bella's question. Good afternoon. For him to repeat the question.
Yes. Well, I guess, I mean, is there anywhere we can increase a little bit more on the size because it's a hundred and thirty four that are smaller?
Let let me give you a little bit of background why they are fifty fours. That northern portion of the subdivision, if you look at the layout, it's it's kind of like not necessarily regular shape, but as it goes to the back, it is. So if if we were to we to add another street going east and west, the project does not become feasible. So what we did is we split the length of those lots and you notice for the tension areas along the south side. So in order for the lots to be still within market price and range, which is around sixty seven hundred square feet. Nowadays, with the increasing prices and everything, we needed a width of fifty four. If we would put them at sixty, it would throw everything outside of market range.
Are you the engineer or you the developer?
Oh, I am the engineer. I'm sorry. Ivan Garcia would be at Delta, but Omar Garcia from Fortis, he's here in case you have any questions. But yes, but the the reason why there are so many lots is because it's all of the northern portion. Because in order to be consistent and efficient with the infrastructure, we had to work with that length. And try to minimize, not minimize, but get to the width that we needed in order to stay within market price.
And the length is what?
The length is a hundred and twenty five, so they're longer than your regular and the square footage. It's over the six thousand. So that's why we're trying to, I guess, configure the lots, taking into consideration depth, width and square footage. To try to stay within market range. That is the reason, but it's all the northern portion. We tried three or four different layouts. We met with staff several times on different things and we made everything work with the exception.
Did you try one with a sixty foot what width?
We we tried it. We run the numbers and all that, but again.
What did you come out with the sixty foot with?
As far as the number of lots.
Yes.
Around one, what's more like one fifty, like one fifty more or less? Yes.
Versus how many?
A hundred and sixty three.
Sir, I have a question for you. Have you developed some type of property like this in other cities?
Yes, we have.
What are the sizes of that? How did that go for you?
We just finished one in McAllen. It's on Taylor, well, on mile five west of Taylor, next to an elementary that's called Silver Al Trail. Those lots were fifty by one ten and they are. The homes that are expected to be built within this subdivision, they're kind of similar to that in the sense that they're. I guess around the two hundred thousand dollar range, right? On that one, we had smaller lots with fifty foot wide, but we were able to lose the setbacks to five instead of six, so that also helped. But the product is kind of similar to this, but we we have done that. We we have done a couple of them in McAllen as well and somewhere in McAllen, but that's the most recent one. I guess comparable in the area and everything to the product that it's intended for this area. But again, the lots were smaller and the same house fit because what we've seen from the builders is that they wouldn't build a bigger house in a bigger lot. They would just build the same house in the same lot, so we're trying to stay within market range again.
What is the width on the lots and several others from Taylor and from our line?
Fifty foot. By a hundred and ten.
And what's the zoning on it?
R one.
And that's a McAllen?
Yes.
Mayor, I I really think I would like to table it so we can further discuss it because I think that this is, this could be a great project in that area. It has been vacant for many, many years and I know it's growing in that area. I pass by it every single day going home. And so I'd like to see something like this, but like I said, it was denied by both planning and staff. But I would like to come to the table to see how we could get them to move on the project.
Yes, sir.
The houses are nice. Is this going to be a gated subdivision?
I'm not this one. This is not going to be a gated subdivision. Yes, but it's same developer, same engineer.
Okay, no other questions. We have a motion on the floor. Ms. Ortega, you want to repeat your motion?
Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to table it so that we can further.
Do I hear a second?
Meet with the engineer and the developer to come to some compromise and then hear it again.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second.
If I may, mayor, excuse me, if anything, you could deny it or take no action on it. Because it would, any new layout would need to go back to PNZ. So any changes they make would need to be reverted back to PNZ, so it would be best if you take no action. They can work on it and then we'll present it to PNZ.
Okay, I will rescind my motion. I'll rescind my second. I'll make a motion to.
Are we okay with it? No actions? So again, send him back to planning and zoning and start with a new.
Yeah, and I'd like to, if staff could go in Randy to see the city of McAllen and how they were able to have that development and. See the difference.
Fifty by a hundred and ten, am I correct?
Yes.
That's what you. We'll check on that to see how that turned out. Because that's even fifty is even smaller than fifty four, you know, so. Okay, no action on item number thirty seven and move to item number thirty eight. Beluna, you have the floor.
Number thirty eight is a preliminary platapool for Stablewood subdivision. This is a two point three seven one acre tract of land situated on lot two fifty six Johnny Sherry subdivision. The current zone is R one T townhouse. The developer is Skyline View Properties LLC. The engineer is M. Gasa Engineering. This property is located three hundred and ninety feet north from the intersection of East Griffin Parkway and North Taylor Road. They're proposing to construct twenty four townhouse residential lots. They would be complying with city water and sewer. Engineer, the engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. Staff is recommending PNZ and staff recommended approval. Subject to payment of capital sewer recovery fees, provide water district exclusion and comply with all of their format findings. This item is public for you.
Council, what are your wishes? We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those post same sign. Motion carries item number thirty eight is approved five oh and calling for item number thirty nine. Mr. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number thirty nine is a preliminary platapool for New Quest Gateway subdivision. This is an eleven point three seven nine acre tract of land being all of lot one mission K Mark subdivision. It's currently zone C three. The developer is J. K. Sears manager. Engineer is Melvin and Hunt Inc. This property is located at the northeast corner of East Expressway eighty three and South Bryan Road. The developer is proposing four general business commercial lots complying with city water and sewer. The city engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. This item is now before you.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second. Needs opening for discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those post same sign. Motion carries item number thirty nine is approved five zero. Calling for item number forty. Mr. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number forty is a final platapool for Las Comadres number eight. This is a fifty nine point thirty four acre tract of land, more or less out of block sixteen Texan Garden. This is in our suburban ETJ. The developer is Carlos Liak. The engineer is South Texas Infrastructure Group. This property is located at the northwest corner of Avon Road and Mile Six Road. They are proposing ninety eight single family residential lots. The water belongs to Agua Suck. For sewer, they will be on septic tanks. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. PNZ and staff recommended approval subject to meeting model subdivision rules complying with street alignment policy. And meeting any comments from the county planning department. This item is now before you.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second and this opening for discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those post same sign. Motion carries item number forty is approved five oh. Calling for item number forty one. Mr. Perez, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item forty one is the approval of an ordinance adopting fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two annual budget. The attached ordinance formally adopts the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two city budget. The budget reads as follows. General fund budget fifty seven million one hundred ninety nine thousand five hundred and sixty nine. Utility fund budget twenty three million two hundred ninety thousand forty four. Golf course budget one million six hundred and forty three thousand eight ninety two. Capital golf course budget fifty thousand one hundred. Solid waste budget eleven million five hundred and ten thousand sixty four. Event center budget seven hundred eighty seven thousand four hundred and fifty six. Special revenue fund budget twenty nine million one hundred eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty one. Capital projects fund budget seven million nine hundred and twenty nine thousand four hundred and thirty six. Group health budget six million five hundred nineteen thousand two hundred and seventy seven. And debt service budget six million six hundred and seventy six thousand six twenty eight. A total of total annual budget for all funds is a hundred and forty four million seven hundred and eighteen thousand two hundred and twenty seven. The staff recommendation is approval of of the ordinance to approve the budget.
Looking for guidance from the council. We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Final discussion on the budget. All those in favor say aye. All those post same sign. Motion carries ordinance fifty eighty five is approved five zero. Perez, and I'm calling for item number forty two. Mr. Perez, you have the floor.
Thank you. Item forty two is the adoption of the ordinance, adopting the tax rate. An ordinance of the city council, the city of Mission, tax levying and ad valorem tax. For the use and support of the municipal government of the city of Mission for the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Providing for portioning each levy for each purpose. Providing when tax shall become due and when shall, when the same shall become delinquent if not paid. And providing for exemptions for the elderly and for the disabled. The tax rate for the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two is zero point five two nine nine per one hundred valuation. In addition to establishing the tax rate, this ordinance provides a ten thousand, ten thousand exemption. For elderly and a ten thousand exemption for a disabled. The city will also continue to a tax freeze established in two thousand and five for the elderly and disabled. Ensuring that the total of ad valorem taxes paid will not increase. The breakdown of the tax rate is entrance and sinking fund is zero point zero nine four zero. Maintenance and operations zero point four three five nine, a total tax rate of zero point five two nine nine. Staff recommendation is approval of the tax rate.
Looking for council's direction.
Want to approve. There's no tax increase.
We have a motion on the floor. Play your second. We have a second. In this, I open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those post same sign. Motion carries ordinance forty correction. Ordinance fifty eighty six is approved five zero. And no tax increase like Mr. Flap said. Item number forty three, Mr. Perez, you have the process.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Approval of the ordinance adopting the Mission Economic Development Corporation fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two annual budget. Attaches a resolution number twenty twenty one zero six that was approved by the MDC board on Tuesday, August thirty first, twenty twenty one. The recommendation is approval of the MDC budget, the adoption of the. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I thought I heard a question. The adoptent of the budget is appropriations of the amount of five million four hundred eighty two thousand six hundred and seven. The MDC debt service budget in the amount of one million seven hundred ninety seven thousand eight forty nine. Staff recommends approval of the budget.
Direction from the council. We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second. In this, I open it for discussion or I would like to ask Mr. Dennis if he has any comments or we move forward. Thank you, Mr. Stubb. All those in favor say aye. All those post same sign. Motion carries ordinance fifty eighty seven is approved five zero and I'm calling for for item number forty four. And Mr. Perez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Item forty four is approval of the ordinance adopting the Mission Economic Development Authority fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two annual budget. Attaches a resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero one that was approved by the Mission Economic Development Authority. On Tuesday, August seventeenth, twenty twenty one. Mission Economic Development Authority appropriations is six hundred and fifty eight thousand three hundred and twenty. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance.
We have a motion on the floor to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second and this opening for discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those post same sign. Motion carries ordinance fifty eighty eighty is approved five zero. And calling for item number forty five. Mr. Perez, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Item forty five, a discussion of possible actions on modifying COVID nineteen city emission guidelines. This is the opportunity for the city council to make any modifications to the city's existing guidelines. Currently, we are coordinating with the county to possibly do a vaccination clinic next week. We will be providing the details as soon as we have confirmation of that. We are still encouraging not only our employees but our citizens to continue to get vaccinated. They haven't been vaccinated. We don't have, we're currently monitoring our our facilities and are also. Strongly encouraging facial coverings for all our employees.
I I have a kind of an assignment for you. One of the things that I've noted the last ten days is as I look at the data from the county. That the the death went from single digit to double digits. I guess, you know, we've heard of a couple of my friends that have passed and so forth, but maybe if you could look at. What's the death toll of COVID nineteen in Mission the last ten days? And and how can, what can we do different for the next city council meeting? To see if we could, we would prevent some of the death. You know, what kind of strategies we can do? I know I know that the morgues are are increasing in in. In their capacity with with individuals that have died, you know, and so forth. So I see the trend moving up for COVID nineteen infections as well as COVID nineteen fatalities. So whatever we're doing, I just want to make sure that it's that it's being effective in Mission. You know, how many of those deaths are if they're from Mission? What are the things that are happening to cow? How can we improve? How can we prevent fatalities or death from COVID nineteen? Or how can we assist Mission Hospital or anybody in school districts? Or or anybody around to be able to to stop the spread because it's not, we're increasing by the numbers that you. As you read them individually, day by day, you know, so I just wanted to see if you could do that for the next.
Is there, can we look into incentives for those that are not vaccinated? So that would help the vaccination rate?
Yes, we should.
And maybe we can. Talk to the school districts possibly and maybe they can cooperate. Especially those that are twelve and over.
Mayor, I have a question for Randy in reference. As of three weeks ago, if my employer, I work at La Hoya I S D, if somebody in my family had COVID. Then I had to use my sick days and stay home.
Yes.
But today, if my daughter has COVID, as long as I'm vaccinated and I don't have any symptoms, I can be at work. So what similar policy do we have here for our city employees?
Yeah, so it's it's similar to that. So right now, if we do have someone positive at home and you are vaccinated. You are able to return to work and you, we monitor the individual with any type of symptoms formally.
With one shot or two shots.
Fully vaccinated.
Not including the booster, just.
That's correct, just the first and second. That's correct, just the first and second dose. And as far as, uh, they, they are, uh, if they do need to stay home, uh, for, if uh, the, depending on the circumstances, they, they are using their own time, uh, currently. Not unless it is a work-related, uh, exposure or, uh, a positive. At that point, it becomes, uh, if it's a civil service, it becomes a worker's comp claim. Um, but they are utilizing, uh, their own time for non-civil service as well. If it's a, uh, if it's not a work, non-work related exposure. Uh, as far as, uh, an unvaccinated employee that has a positive at home, uh, they, they are required to stay home until we, uh, we have a clearance from a medical professional, a medical physician to, uh, for, for them to be able to return, uh, to back to work.
I just hope that we work with the departments because I know like for me, I just found something out and I didn't know, right? And so we work very closely with personnel, even though we wear masks and stuff, but sometimes, you know, you do like right now, there's several individuals that are coughing and sneezing and they're not wearing their mask. So we're around of that because, you know, we just do things without thinking. So I hope that you work with those departments because a lot of times we have people, and I know you send emails, but you can't say what department or who has it.
Yeah.
And so they may be working, but that individual that comes back, they have to, uh, make sure that they safety for all of our employees is of my utmost concern.
Yes, uh, and, and actually today we're, uh, working on a video, uh, in English and Spanish to, um, to share with our employees about the vaccination, about, uh, encouraging the vaccination. And, uh, of course, uh, we, we want to, uh, it's, it's totally up to them as far as their decision and, and their choices. However, we are strongly encouraging them and we are working on a video uh, to provide, uh, our employees with an encouragement on vaccination.
And I, um, I'm with, with Nora when she says that I, I, I really do think that we need to uh, offer some type of incentive for our employees, um, to get vaccinated so that we could all be safer. Um, La Jolla I S D, I think, gave us two hundred and fifty bucks. So I think anything helps, especially if it's, if it, um, helps with them making their decision to get it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I will feel best that we, that I entertain a motion approving what Mr. Perez has presented. And, and moving forward, uh, can I have a motion? We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any final discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries item number forty-five is approved by
Thank you.
By all. Mr. Perez, and I'm calling for item number forty-six. Mr. Lerman, you have the floor, sir.
Mayor, City Council, good afternoon. I come before you, uh, with item, uh, forty-six is, uh, approval of the classified positions for the Mission Fire Department for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, you have in your packets, uh, our Civil Service Commission recommended the following classified positions of deputy chief, captain, lieutenant, engineer, and firefighters. And I'll give you the numbers, uh, for deputy chief, they remain at four. For captain, they remain at six. For lieutenants, they did increase from seventeen to eighteen at the lieutenant's position. For engineers, fifteen, and firefighters, thirty-three. That's a total of seventy-five, uh, in the classified positions. And of course, we do have chief and assistant chief, uh, at the fire department, so it increases it to a seventy-eight at the fire department. But the classified positions that we are requiring, requesting approval is deputy chief, captain, lieutenant, engineer, and firefighters, and those are being approved by the Civil Service Commission and approved by staff. So we are requesting approval of that ordinance.
We have a motion on the floor to approve ordinance fifty-eighty-nine. That would be the ordinance. Do I hear a second? Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Motion carries ordinance fifty-eighty-nine is approved, five-zero, and I, I'm calling for item number forty-seven. Mr. Lerman, you have the floor.
Item number forty-seven is the approval of the base salaries and incentive package for the Mission Fire Department for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. As you have in your packets and approved by your budget, the, a few items ago, the firefighters, uh, increased their salaries by four percent. And I'll go over the entry level salary is thirty-seven thousand. Firefighter one after one year is forty-six thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars and thirty-six cents. The engineer is forty-nine thousand six hundred and six dollars and ninety-six cents. The lieutenant is fifty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. The captain goes up to sixty thousand dollars, two hundred, I mean sixty thousand two hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-four cents. And the deputy fire chief goes up to sixty-six thousand one hundred and three dollars and forty-four cents. The incentive package remains the same. Longevity, seniority, certification, education, assignment pay, and certification pay for EMS. And we did add one based on the budget that was approved on your second page is assignment pay for EMS. And the numbers in your packet, I'm going to make a correction. For E M T and the new changes, it should be four thousand annually. For your E M T advance should be five thousand annually. And for your E M T paramedic, it should be six thousand annually. Those are the incentive package and the base pay that were approved by the commission and are recommended by staff and approved in your budget in the prior item. So we are requesting approval of the ordinance.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, uh, ordinance fifty-ninety is approved, five-zero, and asking for, uh, item number forty-eight. Mr. Lerman, you have the floor.
And item number forty-eight, Mayor, is the approval of the classified positions for the Mission Police Department for fiscal year, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two. And if you have in your packets, the classified positions approved by the commission were lieutenant, sergeant, corporal, and patrolman. And the numbers for twenty-one, twenty-two will be lieutenant will go up to six. And they requested in addition, which is go up from five to six. Sergeant remains at ten. Corporal remains at nine. Patrolman will go down from one forty to one thirty-nine. And the total will be one sixty-four on those classified positions. And we do have two assistant chiefs and one chief of police, so a total of one sixty-seven. At this time, we are requesting approval of the classified positions approved by our Civil Service Commission, which are lieutenant, sergeant, corporal, and patrol.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? We have a second, and this I open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries ordinance fifty-ninety-one is approved. I'm calling for item number forty-nine. Mr. Lerman, you have the floor.
Item number forty-nine is the approval of the base salaries and incentive package for the Mission Police Department for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And in your packets, you have the increases that were done a six percent by approval of the budget in the prior item. The police officer, entry-level police officer remains at forty thousand dollars. The police officer after one year of civil service will be fifty-two thousand forty dollars and thirty-two cents. The police corporal will be sixty-three thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. The police sergeant will be sixty-eight thousand forty-one dollars and nineteen cents. And the police lieutenant will be seventy-two thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty cents. That's an increase of six percent that was approved in your prior item with a budget. And of course, you still have your incentive packets of longevity pay, seniority pay, certification pay, education pay, assignment pay, and the clothing allowance for the, at the police department. So at this time, we are requesting approval of the ordinance, so we can approve the base pay and the incentive package for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second, and this I open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries ordinance fifty-ninety-two is approved, five-zero, and I'm calling for item number fifty. If you get it, you have the floor, sir.
Hey, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Seeking authorization for, uh, modification to agreement for Mission Event Center Lighting and Door Enhancement Project Architectural Services. C D A Architecture has been awarded for the architectural design and program management for the Mission Event Center Lighting and Door Enhancements. Requesting approval to modify the project management compensation by an additional nine thousand dollars from the original one thousand five hundred for a total of ten thousand five hundred. Modifications due to the additional services for project management.
I move for approval.
Second. Do you have a motion? In a second, and this I open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, uh, five-oh for item number fifty. And calling for item number fifty-one. Mr. Gia, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item number fifty-one is the authorization to award contract for stop-loss insurance. In twenty twenty, the city of Mission entered into a contractual agreement for stop-loss insurance. Due to industry standards, the contract term was for one year. Proposals were solicited for stop-loss insurance to cap any excess costs exceeding our specific deductible for medical and prescription costs. Proposals were evaluated and evolution risk was the lowest responsible bidder. Staff, Insurance Committee, and City Manager recommend approval.
Guidance from the council?
The insurance committee is composed of, uh, Mr. Raymond Longoria. We have two council members on the committee, uh, myself, uh, Mr. Hinojosa from Risk Management, uh, Mr. David Flores.
I, I think, I think that the committee was created about, about two years ago. Or approximately about two years ago.
To internal committees for the staff. So we're going to continue with the same vendor?
It's the same vendor, Evolution Risk. They're the ones that we currently have right now.
But you just want to, you just want to
It's, yeah, it's a new contract because it's only for one year, but it's just, it's with the same vendor.
And he's the lowest bid?
Yes.
And how did he do within the, the past year?
Good. I mean, stop-loss pretty much just once we hit our deductible for a particular employee, they pay us what we pay over that deductible amount, which is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So once we hit that, it's just paperwork that we do, uh, that we have to submit showing what we've paid, and then they give us that reimbursement.
But do you have anything, uh, any problems with it?
No, sir, no. Yes.
Since I opened it for discussion already, you know, I need to, the council feel that the council's okay with the, does they have any questions? Any other council members have any questions?
I, I just want to kind of, just, uh, have a question on the committee and Did it just, who was on the committee again? I know you said two council members, so I'm not sure which.
It's Ms. Soto and Mr. Vela, council members, oh, Mr. Raymond Longoria, um, myself, Mr. Robert Hinojosa from Risk Management, uh, the purchasing director, Mr. David Flores, Assistant City Manager, and then we have an employee from the fire department and an employee from the police department.
And, and this committee meets for all, all of the insurance, um, issues?
When we're going to go out for, uh, proposals, we review that. Uh, when we see the proposals, we review the proposals with the committee as well.
I think, I think it was approved by the council. He was appointed by the mayor of the council.
Correct.
And he runs the meeting?
Yes.
So did y'all go to the meeting?
I didn't come, I don't remember.
I was out of town. You were out of town.
Were you invited to the meeting?
Yeah.
Were you invited to the meeting?
Mr. Vela has been very busy helping our community. Yeah.
But do you have any questions?
No.
That, you weren't there, if you have any questions?
The committee is very vocal and they, we have Raymond Longoria as the chair, so he's
Now, now I entertain the motion, Mr. Lopez.
I, I didn't have, I didn't have a motion, I just had a question.
Sorry.
I made the motion based on the recommendation.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any final notes? Mr. Perez, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Um, and, uh, we do want to, uh, set up a presentation, uh, from staff on all our, our insurance products, so that way the council is aware of all the insurances, uh, uh, moving forward. So that way, uh, everyone's aware of the plans that we have and of course, the coverages and so forth.
Along with that take, so we could say, maybe set it for the next city council meeting at four-thirty.
An hour.
An hour, you take?
The hour before, yes.
Okay.
We can set it up, uh, and I don't know if you want to call it a workshop. Call it a workshop and, and set it up at four-thirty.
Also, Mayor, maybe we could have like alternates if, uh, the two designated councilmen cannot attend. Maybe the other rest of us could come in? If that's a possibility.
I can recommend that you be Mr. Vela's alternate and Mr. Plaza's, uh, recommend to be, miss, uh, his alternate is alternate.
Okay.
So, so in case you, you're okay, can contact each other. You know, and, and staff, you, you, you'll have that kind of story, you know?
Randy, I have a question. Mayor, I have a question for Randy or Ms. Nine, maybe both of you can answer. So the committee was created to discuss all the different insurance issues and products that are coming forward. But is there any way that once the committee, and then they go up for bids and you get the lowest and then the second and the third? Is there any way maybe the presentation of the top three or maybe the top two come and present to city council? And then we can have some type of decision on that? As recommended by the committee, but for us to hear them out.
Yeah, with plenty of time, because I know that we're running up to a, uh, renewal time and it's not feasible right now.
Yeah, no, but before.
For next time.
Yes, we can definitely, uh, start that, uh, process and presentation for the renewals on, on the next, uh,
How many, how many insurances are coming up for renewal?
We just, we just renewed this year, we went out for dental vision, uh, stop-loss, third-party administrator, most of them. So next year, mainly we'd be doing renewals. Maybe like four or five renewals.
Maybe we could focus on May and June, because I know, I know the, uh, the, usually the transition of, of, uh, between September and October.
Right, those we have to do sooner because they have to be in place before open enrollment. Stop-loss is more of an internal one, just for the human resource department. This is usually the last one that we do.
Well, let's see, we could focus on February, March.
Sure.
I think that would be a good guidance for, for staff. Focus on February, March, I mean. If you, even play at that, because we don't want to get to the corner where, where we have to, we're pressured by time to make a a, a decision that, that maybe later on we can regret.
We normally do it in April. Normally, they ask for at least six months of claims history for the current year, so normally April will be the, the month that we go out.
Any other question? Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries item fifty-one is approved, five-zero, and call for item number fifty-two. Chief Dominguez, you have the floor.
Good evening again, Mayor of City Council. Item fifty-two is authorization to purchase one Sky Cop mobile surveillance unit through a sole source vendor, S C I Technologies, Inc. The total expenditure for the Sky Cop mobile surveillance unit will be fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. Purchase will be from a, from the twenty-twenty Stone Garden, uh, program from the office of the governor. Staff and city manager recommend approval for this purchase.
We have a motion on the floor to, to approve item fifty-two. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this I open it for discussion. I just have a couple of things, chief.
Yes, sir.
The current ones that we have, the, there are, are they all operable?
Yes. As a matter of fact, uh, I utilized some Stone Garden funds, uh, last year's Stone Garden funds, uh, to rework all the camera systems on the two older ones. And now the third one, obviously, is brand new. Uh, so all three have brand new cameras, uh, on them, and they're working fine.
Have you thought about doing a, what we call a local area network to one server, uh, dispatch, so somebody can watch those cameras?
Uh, yes, sir, we have that in place and, uh, we have it there at the police department and we have it also with U S border control.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries item fifty-two is approved, five-zero, and call for item number fifty-three. Chief, you have the floor.
Item fifty-three is approval of an ordinance providing for a three-way stop intersection at Colorado and Cimarron Drive. The request is due to Home, the Owners Association stating that there have been multiple accidents at the location since there is currently only one stop sign at the location. Accident investigated at requested location shows there's a three-way stop, that a three-way stop would
that a three-way stop would not have prevented the actions that occurred there. On September seventh, 2021, the Traffic Safety Committee reviewed the request for a three-way stop intersection and recommended against placing the three-way stop intersection. Also, we have for you, sir, the location as far as some different views. Obviously, this is the westbound view. Here's the eastbound view as we're traveling on Cimarron Drive towards that particular intersection, as you can see ahead. And then this is the northbound view. The northbound view is obviously from, from Polorado to Cimarron Drive. Obviously, the concern of the residents is that particular intersection. Well, I have staff do a study for the last eleven years, from 2010 to present, and that particular intersection in those eleven years has had a total of four accidents. Two of them were where a person went past the intersection. One person went past the intersection and backed up to go back to the intersection to turn and hit somebody behind. The second one was somebody parked in their garage, opened the garage, backed up, and hit their own car, parked right outside their car. The two others were pretty bad accidents where the driver went off the roadway, struck a couple of mailboxes and a couple of parked cars. On those two particular accidents, both drivers were intoxicated. So those are the four accidents in the eleven-year period that we've had that particular intersection. So obviously, during the Traffic Safety Committee, we did have, well, first, we invited the person that put the request for the three-way stop. She couldn't make it, so didn't show up at all. But there were a couple of residents that came from Cimarron. And obviously, at the direction from my staff and also from the city engineer, we talked to them about taking some other precautionary things in that area. One is signage. There's no signage out there whatsoever, to a warning sign saying curb up ahead. And then, at the same time, putting some, some type of rumble strips. We've had some up out there, but one of the concerns were the fact that they're too small. So we're, you know, obviously, we're waiting for the outcome of this meeting to see what direction you're going to give us. But obviously, what we want to do is get with tech side and maybe the surrounding communities to see what type of rumble devices they're using on their roadways. And just to make it, I guess, both devices a little, a little bit bigger, and obviously, to bring more attention to the driver's approach in that particular area. But based on the, on the number of accidents and the type of accidents, we don't believe that it warrants a three-way stop intersection. And that's why we're asking for denial of the three-way stop intersection.
Chief, was this request presented to the HOA?
Yes, it was.
And what did the HOA say?
Well, the HOA, really what they want is they want speed bumps. But again, they have a concern in going to their residents to sign a petition as requested under ordinance, that they have to have sixty-six percent of the people that are going to be affected by the placing of these speed bumps. So obviously, I told them, you know, well, they asked, what other things can we do? And obviously, they had already brought up the three-way stop sign intersection situation to me. And obviously, their deal is about slowing down traffic. So I discussed, you can request a three-way stop sign. It doesn't mean it's going to get passed, but you can request it and we can look at it. Because they don't, you know, of course, I've had, I've talked to several residents, and their, their concern to me was the fact that, how come they're here and there and so forth? And I said, well, I have an ordinance in place, the city has an ordinance in place, and I have to follow. You need sixty-six percent of the people that are going to be affected by these speed bumps to sign it. And of course, they were upset at the fact that they have to go out and get signatures. So then, the three-way stop situation came back up again. And I said, you can ask for it, but we'll look at it. And obviously, from the engineering standpoint, our city engineer looked at it. I mean, I looked at it as well. If you looked at this particular slide on the northbound, if you, if you see the car, the white car, right in front of that stop sign, that's where the stop sign would go for the people traveling west. So I don't know how we would do it as far as the city to, I guess, put up a sign basically for the car that, on that home. That's, that's another thing we would have to deal with, with the homeowner of that particular home, of how to do that. But just in looking at the practicality, because I only look at it from, not from the professional side as an engineer, because I'm not an engineer, I'm a police chief, but just from the practical side and just based on the investigation we've done on that particular intersection and the number of accidents with that, to me, it just doesn't make sense. Now, obviously, there's other things I think we should take into effect, like recommended by our city engineer, of putting some bigger type rumble strips, and by putting the adequate signage to slow down traffic in that area. And they didn't bring it up, but obviously, to me, the other concern is the other kind of sharp turn on Cimarron Drive as you approach Triobalzas. On that particular intersection, we've had three accidents at that intersection, but all of them have to do with a stop sign. The only one we have recently, like two months ago, was a young boy with two other people in the car. Again, at the curb, intoxicated, went over the curb, went through a fence, and hit, hit a parked car on the backside of Triobalzas. Again, alcohol was involved. And that particular curb also, I think, requires some type of a warning sign, and also maybe some rumble strips before getting to the actual part of the curb. So that's what we suggested from the Police Department side, and obviously, from the city engineer. The residents were okay with it, but they obviously just said, don't leave us alone, you know? And of course, you know, there's the masses, there's, there's a lot of people, there are different opinions from different folks, right? So there's people that are saying it's okay, there's people that are saying, no, we want speed bumps, we want stop signs, we want, so obviously, the decision is yours of what you want us to do. It's either erect the three-way stop intersection, or obviously, leave it as is, but start working on putting in some warning devices on the roadway and on the side of the road.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
What about putting a three-way stop sign of Triobalzas and Cimarron Drive? I live around there. I mean, I take the road to the house, and there's no stop sign all the way from Sherry all the way to it's about more than a half of a mile, and it's dangerous. It does, I stopped walking in that area because of the same reason, there's a car coming. We wouldn't, they were not able to see. And I know a couple of years, but we had an accident where one of the banking boys was hit with a I mean, I know it's, that's when we put that stop sign on.
It's Triobalzas.
Triobalzas, but there's another one, the one that goes to the expressway.
But also, yes, sir.
I think you're
There would be halfway of the whole, and there's already stop sign there, so you just put in a because it is very dangerous. I know that in the last six months, we didn't have the one with a mailbox, and then the one that went, went over the fence and then went into somebody else's garage.
That's, that's the intoxicated young man.
Because I'm pretty sure they were coming at least, I mean, at very high speed, so.
And unfortunately, sir, in a lot of these accidents, of which, you know, it's alcohol that plays a role, but of course, it's still our residents that get their fence or mailboxes, sometimes even their homes, that the car goes into a hurry. And unfortunately, you know, fortunately, we haven't had anybody killed that way. You know, we did have somebody die right there at that curb before you take the curb, like fifteen, twenty years ago. Again, intoxicated at a high rate of speed, no seatbelt, was ejected when he went off the road and went into the cop course and was ejected from the car.
I don't know what the speed limit, but vehicles go there around forty-five, fifty miles an hour. On a curve, it's very, very dangerous.
But I'm sure we can look at that particular intersection, not brazos. I mean, maybe that would be more feasible, like you're saying, it's kind of the halfway point. But you know, that particular intersection, sir, I can tell you just from experience. And my concern is this, this is how I look at it, again, from the, from my perspective as a chief, not as an engineer, because I don't, you know, obviously, it's not my thing as far as the traffic, but in that respect, as the chief of police, you know, I look at also the liability against the city. We put the three-way stop intersection because we want to slow down traffic. There's some type of major accident, people get hurt. And then I think about the other consequences. So here comes the attorney from the other party saying, well, I have this expert engineer says, what engineer would have signed up on a three-way stop intersection here on a curb, you know? So I mean, there's a lot of back and forth that we can go.
But rather, it's before you get to the curb.
Well, yes, on the one that you're talking about, I mean, brazos, but the one before you right now, it's on the actual curb, you know? So that's why I'm concerned of putting a three-way stop intersection on a curb.
Any other, just, or tell you?
I want to go ahead and go with, make my motion to go ahead with their denial of what the committee and the chief's recommendation.
We recognize your motion.
Go ahead and meet with the residents and, and make whatever suggestions you all had that were very good to start the process.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second in this final discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who say aye. Item number fifty-three is denied, five-zero. And I'm calling for item number fifty-four.
Good afternoon. My name is Cecesa Garcia, and I will be presenting for Angie Vela. The approval of the budget amendments for General and Capital Projects Fund. The First Amendment is in general fund for $54,330, and expenditures for the city matched to close out the North Inspiration Road project. The capital project fund in the amount of $184,911 in revenues and expenditures for the remaining expenditures in the North Inspiration Road project. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Move for approval, ma'am?
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who say aye. Motion carries item fifty-four is approved five-zero. I don't have any unfinished business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I don't have any unfinished business, so I'll move it over to routine matters, city manager's comments. You have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir, just wanted to just announce that we did travel on Thursday, Friday for the Star Texas Award that was awarded to Corporal Spedias Bericueta. Was presented by the Texas Governor, and we attended that event. And also, we will be providing information once it becomes available on a future vaccinations clinic hosted here in our city. That's all.
Thank you. I have several comments to make. One is I want to congratulate the National Butterfly Center. The National Butterfly Center made it to the Texas Monthly on the magazine, and I just want to compliment that they're putting Mission on the, on the on, on the map at, as competitive with all the other cities that were named in the Texas Monthly. I just want to make sure that Ms. Wright is congratulated for that as Mission is on the map in Texas, Texas Monthly. So that's number, number one. Number two, I want to announce that we are working jointly with the Anza Duros Bridge Committee and, and the City of McAllen. On, on Wednesday, we're going to start a vaccination program at the Idalgo-McAllen Bridge, effective around, on Wednesday at eleven AM in the morning. We're going to be duplicating what we duplicated with Tamalipas Maquiladoras. We're going to duplicate it with Nuevo León, Nuevo León, Mexico, the state of Nuevo León. The Maquiladoras, they're working, they work closely with us in McAllen, the Mission, through, through the Tamalipas Association. So I just want to let the public know that that's happening. So we see it in the, in the, on the TV and so forth, that you know that Mission is a partner in that. And having said that, I do also want to thank all staff members that worked this weekend, you know, preparing for, for the possible tropical storm. You know, Parks and Recreation and Public Works, all the fire police and City Manager's office and minutes, you know, as far as that is concerned. I did activate the ELC for, for, I think it was about twenty-four hours, am I correct? We closed it down as soon as the threat kind of passed on us. You know, not to say that we're not vigilant. Right now, we are, you know, just to let, but I want to thank all the staff members that we called out off-duty and so forth to assist in making everything, especially the send, send back people. You know? And so just want to let you, let them make sure that all directors, thank your staff in one way or another, whoever was involved in the, in the out-call of duty personnel as well as on-duty personnel, you know, that assisted in getting us through this, this trying time of this you know, anytime we see a cloud now, you know, we know, we talk about flooding left and right, you know? But we have some flooding plants in place, and that's, I want to let you know. And, or, and I'll ask God for, for time to, give us time to be able to, to convert the plants from paper into, into the ground and as far as the drainage system that we're trying to work in, inside the City of Mission. I have one more, and that is, on Wednesday, we are going to be honored with the, with the visit in, in Mission by the governor-elect of Nuevo León. We are going to have a private meeting at the, at the bridge with him. And, and from there, he wants to tour the City of Mission, you know? So we're going to work with the chief, the chief and the city manager and the staff on what, you know, you know, how we're going to handle that. The, we had not released any information, because obviously, everything has to be approved by, by Customs and Border Patrol as far as, as far as that is concerned. And we finally got that confirmation and clearance this morning, about ten o'clock this morning. So that's the best information that I can provide at this time. I would like to invite the council, and I asked the city secretary to go ahead and, and and post a possible warrant for Wednesday night at, at six-thirty. We're going to have a private dinner with the, with the governor-elect from Nuevo León, Eta Manurk. I think that's the new name of the old Renéz, you know, so, so, so they're hosted, hosted the, the so the council and the city managers. Then you're, then you're, you guess, you know, whoever you want to bring is, is invited, you know? It's my understanding that he may close down the place just because of security purposes and the number of people that we don't know exactly how many he's bringing in his, in his crew from, from Mexico, from, from Nuevo León. But we'll, we'll work with him, you know, we'll work with him. In case you don't know, he's a governor-elect, I think he's thirty-three years old. He's a really young individual, has a lot of aspirations, you know, and so forth. And we want for him to be able to think of Mission Texas as part of his, his overall plan for the next six years, they get six years, right? Six years, for the next six years, not to get Mission Texas. And we can work together on international issues, as well as international progress and economic development. I will recall the city manager, because he has one more.
Yes, sir, I do apologize. I do want to take this opportunity for Peter to come up and introduce himself to the council. Peter is our new purchasing director. I know that he came up, last time, we didn't have the full council here present, but I wanted to introduce, he's our second week here, and I'll have him an opportunity to go.
Peter, you have the podium.
All right, well, thank you. Happy to be here, been working in the private sector for over twenty years and purchasing quite a bit. So this is a new opportunity for the city. And it's starting week three now. But it's been a great experience thus far, being able to meet the team and the the positive attitude that I've seen from everybody and wanting to work well together and make improvements. And it's really been great to see, so I'm here to support, so please let me know.
Well, welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll start from the right, Mr. Ortega, you have the.
No comments, ma'am.
Okay, if no other comments, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session. We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye. All same sign. Motion carries five zero for executive session pursuant to BTCA government code section five-five-one point zero-zero-one.
We have a motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, all same sign, motion carries. Second session on agenda item number fifty-five, A. It is.
I get the decision for the motion to this man offer important this department.
And a decline move to eminent domain.
With resolution number?
Seventeen forty-three.
Seventeen forty.
All so moved.
We have a motion, do I hear second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, all same sign. Motion carries, fifty-six A.
That may refer the motion to deny our local if presented.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, all same sign, motion carries, fifty-six B.
On that matter, that requires the motion to accept and adapt directive to discuss in second session, and I'll be bringing back a template for you all to adopt and read or change.
We have a motion on floor and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, all same sign, a motion carries, I'll entertain the adjournment. We have a motion to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.